Okay, good afternoon, everyone. This is Christina Hill. We're about to start our virtual town hall. This is for developmental disabilities waiver renewal. And first of all, I would like to welcome you and thank you for taking time to join us. We know everybody is busy and you've taken time out of your days to join us here. We are conducting a town hall on a virtual platform and it is about the renewal of the DD waiver program. So I would like to start with introductions. There's three presenters today, myself, Christina Hill, I work for Department of Health, DBSD, and the Community Programs PRL. My co-presenters are...
Good afternoon, my name is Scott Dillon and I'm one of the deputy directors for DBSD.
My name is Wendy Corey and I'm a contractor with DBSD.
Great, so thank you and we'll get going. We do have a set presentation and some opportunity for dialogue, too. So let me get our presentation up. Here we go. Okay, so the objectives that we have today are to provide an opportunity for you all to share your recommendations and your feedback to us as we try to develop some improvements in our DD waiver program. We will review the application timelines and the public input process. And when I speak about application, these are not individual applications, but this is the state's application to Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, CMS. We do need to apply to CMS every five years to get our waiver program approved. So we'll also highlight the elements of the CMS application, they're called waiver appendices. We'll review a little bit about the current DD waiver program. And we'll review some general topical items, leaving time for you to provide some comments. So going back to the first objective and hearing from you, I wanted to mention a few things. We would like to primarily use the chat box as a mechanism to hear from you. And so if you would put comments, questions in the chat box as we go, we'll be stopping periodically and trying to get through all of those. There will be an opportunity at the very end where we'll open up the microphone with a large number of people on the webinar like this. Having an open mic without being able to identify whose turn it is to talk is a little bit hard to manage, so we'll leave time at the very end. And if you let us know through the chat box that you'd like an opportunity to speak, just as an open forum, then let us know and we'll lift the mute button on your microphone. You will have to have a microphone on your device that you're using, your computer, for that to work, so keep that in mind. Finally, we'll let you know how to contact us later on. You may come up with things in the middle of the night or sometime in the future. And this is not the only opportunity to provide comment or input to us. And in fact, it's really just the beginning of opening up for dialogue. So you'll see that a lot of the presentation today is very general and broad, leaving it wide open for your input. But as details get worked through, we will be coming back for more input. Also, midway through the presentation, we're going to open up what's called a poll, just to get a sense from who is here in the audience, just a little bit about your opinions in general, and then the results will be able to be shared to the group. It's really just for interest and to kind of help with dialogue. And those results are absolutely anonymous, so you just put your answers in and we'll have in lifetime sort of an opinion poll about a few items. Did I catch all the logistics? Okay. So moving forward, I would like to mention that we have a partnership in general with the Human Services Department, Medical Assistance Division, the Department of Health, and the Human Services Department really operate together to administer and operate our waiver programs in New Mexico. So we're talking today just about DD waiver, but together we have a partnership for media, MedRAG, DD waiver, and our new supports waiver. Okay, if you haven't been made aware of DBSD's mission in the past, I'm just going to mention it here because it really is foundational for the work that we do and the improvements that we would want to consider for the DD waiver program. So the mission of DBSD is to effectively administer a system of person-centered community supports and services that promotes positive outcomes for all stakeholders, with a primary focus on assisting individuals with developmental disabilities and their families to exercise their right to make choices, grow, and contribute to their community. So that's a mouthful, but in short, really, DBSD is looking to envision a state where people with intellectual developmental disabilities are just simply part of the fabric of their communities and live the lives of their choice in their own communities. So what does this mean to you? It sounds pretty good, the mission sounds pretty good, but what does it really mean? So for some people, we've learned through different forums, we've been trying to collect input in different ways, in a lot of different forums over the years. And for some people, it means having a job, having a pet, staying home, or going out when I want to. A shout out to Marilyn Martinez, I don't know if you are in the audience right now. Marilyn is a very strong advocate and I've heard her mention in many forums that she uses the expression, "It means a home of our own." And I want to just take a moment, we can pause for just a moment, and the chat box is open, if anybody would like to submit a comment about what this means to you. So I'm going to move forward, but please know that if you are making comments throughout the presentation, just keep going forward, we will come back to them and keep pausing as we need to, to make sure comments, input, and questions are addressed. So this next slide is about the CMS final rule. The final rule means that it's actually the law for waiver programs to ensure rights and quality of services for people in home and community-based waivers. And the DD waiver is a home and community-based waiver. So the Know Your Rights campaign, and it's a successor campaign, I guess you would call an advocate rights and responsibility, have been conducting town halls in our state for the last two years. And some of the highlights of this campaign include person-centeredness, inclusion, access, integration, informed choice, satisfaction with services, and the ability to achieve personal desired outcomes. So thanks to the New Mexico Leadership Academy, Allies for Advocacy, DDPC, these entities have been partnering with DBSD, and this campaign has done a lot across the state to help promote awareness of rights and responsibilities for people receiving waiver services. So this is again another hallmark of our DD waiver program and any improvements that we might want to consider. So how do we bring those sorts of values from the previous slide to life? So we put people first, that a person-centered system is a first and foremost. Listening to people we support, this is one of the number-one themes that we heard in town halls across the state. Supporting people on the waivers to be as independent as possible was another theme that we heard in town halls. Shifting attitudes and implementing a person-centered system through the DD waiver program and DD waiver service standards, excuse me. So those are the details of how we operate the DD waiver program. We need your input, your recommendations are so important, so that we can move and bring these values to life more fully in our state. I'm going to say a little bit about the renewal process and really what it's about. So to operate a waiver program, a state needs to have approval from Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, from CMS. So that's the federal agency that oversees any state's Medicaid program and what by any waiver programs operated by the state. So CMS will review New Mexico's request for renewal of the DD waiver program. We've operated the program since '84, and every five years we have to renew our approval with CMS. And those are critical junctures when we can make improvements. They are the only time that we can make improvements, we can do amendments during those five-year cycles, but this is a pretty critical time when we can think about our program and see if there are improvements to be made. As well as retaining what works well, we don't want to forget that there's a lot of good things about our system as it exists, and we do want to retain what works well. So HSD, Human Services Department, and the Department of Health, we are working together. We complete the federal application for the DD waiver renewal, and that will be submitted sometime in the fall. I'm going to go over specific timelines in some subsequent slides. So for now, I do want to talk about the program as it exists right now a little bit. DD waiver as a program, it should enhance and not replace other resources in our New Mexico system. It is a part of the system and available benefits and resources to people, but it's not everything for a person. So here you have on this slide a list of other resources that may be available to people. Generic and community resources, anything unique to a person's community that anyone else has access to is also something that can be considered for a person in the DD waiver program. The state plan, the Medicaid state plan, it's known as Centennial Care. There are medical and behavioral benefits available as part of that Medicaid state plan. ESTAT, early periodic screening, diagnosis, and treatment, and school-based programs for children exist. And in fact, CMS doesn't allow waiver programs to duplicate what's available in the state plan and ESTAT, for example. So when someone is under 21, a child, if there are services available through ESTAT, individuals should be seeking those services before going to the waiver program. And there's also the Department of Vocational Rehabilitation with access to employment supports. So we've learned over time, and even more recently in talking about our supports waiver, that there are people in our system that don't know a lot about other benefits available to them, or maybe don't know how to seek those benefits. So I just wanted to spend a little bit of time reminding people that there are other supports available outside of the waiver programs that should really work to make a whole comprehensive support plan for people in our waiver programs. Okay, I will say a little bit about the timeline. So right now, we're in, we're almost in November 2019. The process to plan for a waiver renewal, as you can see, is actually quite a lengthy process. So starting in the summer of 2019, so back this summer and even back as far as May, DBSD developed some internal work groups to identify topic areas for improvement. We'll stop and land on some of those topic areas at the end of the presentation and ask for your input. But the work groups have gathered some data and are researching things and creating some thoughts and considerations that will be shared at a later date to get more input on. We've also created a steering committee. It is a subcommittee of our Advisory Council on Quality. And in the fall now, basically, we're starting to gather more input and recommendation from all stakeholder groups. This remote town, the remote town hall idea, we're trying this for the first time now to see if a virtual town hall seems to be a forum that works well for some people. This does not mean that we won't have face-to-face town halls statewide. We will, and you'll see that we have a reserved time in the spring of 2020 to present more concrete draft waiver renewal recommendations. And then the plan is to submit the application to the federal authority in the fall of 2020. Typically, CMS will ask questions of the state and ask for clarification about the application, so we reserve like six to nine months to have that back-and-forth conversation before anticipating the approval from CMS. But we have received approved waiver programs going back as far as 1983, so we don't anticipate any trouble, but we do need to respond to CMS questions and anticipate that our waiver would be renewed again by July 1st, 2021. Okay, a little bit about the steering committee. So the purpose is with the steering committee development is to help the state improve our DD waiver system, hearing all the voices and bringing all viewpoints to the table. So we have a membership of 25 people, might be more or less, one or two. But the key point here is that we have about half representing the provider system and half representing people in services, self-advocates, advocate agencies, family members, and guardians. And the key is that we need a mix of membership to really identify and learn what works for the whole system to work well together. If you are very interested in hearing more about the steering committee work, there is a webpage on our DBSD website for the DD waiver steering committee. And on that page, you'll see the URL at the end of the presentation. We do post handouts that the steering committee receives and the summary of our meetings, et cetera. Before moving on, if anyone on the steering committee is actually in the audience, I'd like to ask you to make yourself known to whoever might be with you. We honor and appreciate you. The people on the steering committee come to meetings that last three hours, and they travel from distances to join us in Albuquerque, and they bring up really important issues. So steering committee members, we thank you for the work that you're doing and the time commitment that you've shared with us already. The steering committee did identify and agree to the values listed here to drive the work that we're doing. So those values are person-centeredness, advocacy, transparency, respect, being cost-conscious, independence for people with disabilities, a full allocation of financial resources are needed. Basically, what this means to say here is that we do need to advocate for funding from our legislature to fund our programs, to move forward. And then finally, efficient and effective oversight of the waiver program. Okay, so real quickly, we just, I do want to just reiterate, we have been gathering input even before this town hall here. This slide has a list for reference of a number of the forums where we've been gathering input for some time now. I'd like to highlight the People First listening sessions. One occurred recently in Roswell, I believe that was at the end of September, and then in early October, there was a listening session in Albuquerque, where the People First chapters provided a lot of information, and DBSD staff attended and really just heard a lot of important impactful statements from people in services, so thank you for that. This is one example of a comment received from an Albuquerque Know Your Rights Town Hall meeting, so this was back in February 2017, but it seems to be representative of things that we hear somewhat regularly, and it's not modified. It's a comment that was written and provided to us, I wanted to highlight that here. So will they be able to have parties, since they took away parties in the group homes? And have real candles? Can they have snacks if they want to? If they don't need to be on a diet? Can they eat what they want? Just because someone else needs to does not mean that they should not as well. Can they get rights to jobs that are not on nine-to-five workdays and get back home? Can they have an animal that is not for service? Can they have a ride for help? With him or her? Can we live where there is no drugs and on a good running bus route and not have to be buffed for money? Here's some examples of things and themes that we heard in our listening sessions that I referenced that we just occurred pretty recently. If Laura Matthews and Roel Adamson are in the audience, I want to thank you. This is the president and vice president of People First in Albuquerque, and they coordinated and got a very well-intended session going in Albuquerque. Matthew Hetty is the president of the Roswell People First chapter, and as well, a thank you for the work that you do to help DBSD understand or about people's needs and desires for the DD waiver program. So some of the things that we heard, themes that we heard in these listening sessions, decisions are sometimes made without a participant's awareness or understanding. Many participants do not see or understand their plans. Let's figure out what is possible versus why things can't happen. Finding and having friends is really important. Many people one time alone in their home. Staff can be really important in people's lives. So at this point now, I'm going to turn it over to Scott John, who's going to present some more about the actual waiver application.
Okay, thank you, Christina. So next, several slides, we're going to talk about the actual DD waiver renewal application to the federal government, which is the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, as Christina has mentioned earlier. Also, as Christina stated, we've been renewing the DD waiver since 1984. Part of the application to the federal government, the application has 11 modules. It has a main module, which is the request to renew the waiver, and then it has 10 appendices within the actual application. So over the next several slides, we're going to be reviewing the actual appendices of the waiver application. So Appendix A is waiver administration and operation. And so what the question is, is what entities are involved in the operation of the waiver? So the state has to provide the federal government, you know, with the answers to each of these questions. And so as Christina talked about earlier, the two state entities that are involved are the Human Services Department and the Department of Health. The Human Services Department is the administrative agency, they're the lead agency, they submit the application directly to the federal government, they respond directly to the federal government with any questions that they may have. And then the Department of Health is the operational agency. So we obviously consult with HSD, we provide our input in terms of any questions that may come from. CMS, we're very much involved in the actual development of the application and the submission, and also as part of our operations, we oversee the operations and implementation of the actual services of the DD waiver. So Appendix B, participant access and eligibility. So who receives waiver services? So we have to explain who's actually going to receive the services from the state of New Mexico, and so that's individuals with developmental disabilities who are currently on the DD waiver, are currently on our waiting list, who have been deemed to meet the criteria, and would receive these services upon allocation. Appendix C talks about participant services, what services does the waiver offer? And so in the application, we have to inform the federal government of our services we are going to offer as part of the DD waiver. As most of us know, the DD waiver is a comprehensive waiver. It includes residential services, it includes day services, employment services, therapy, behavior support consultation. In a few slides from now, we're going to actually go over each of the listed services. The next part of the application is Appendix D, person-centered planning and service delivery. So how are the participants' needs identified and addressed during person-centered planning? How does the state monitor delivery of waiver services? So first part of that question is, is we describe, you know, our person-centered process, through the interdisciplinary team process, through the individual service planning process, to assessments that we use for planning IDT meetings and the actual written individual service plan. And so that's all spelled out in the actual waiver application. But how does the state monitor delivery of waiver services? We do that in a variety of different ways. We have the case management component, which is obviously one of the roles of the case managers, to monitor implementation of services for those individuals on their specific caseload. We have the Division of Health Improvement and the Quality Management Bureau, who monitors services through their survey process. We also have our regional offices, who are out almost on a daily basis, working with providers, individuals, they visit homes, they may visit individuals in the community, so we monitor services in that way as well. Appendix E is participant direction of services. So we want to make sure within the DD waiver that individuals have opportunities to self-direct services of individuals along with their guardians and support systems. Not only do they get to select the actual services, but do individuals have true choice in their daily life? You know, to go back to the slide about Know Your Rights, we want to make sure that individuals have opportunity and choice, things that we take for granted on a daily basis, like, you know, what they might want to have for dinner in the evening, where you may want to go to lunch. Who do you go to lunch with? Who do you live with? Do you have a housemate? Those kinds of things are all part of our self-directed... Those kinds of things are all part of our self-directed services and processes. Appendix F is participant rights, how are participant rights protected? One example of this is our Human Rights Committees. So we need to assure the federal government that we have protections in place for individuals. If an individual's rights are ever going to be restricted or taken away, that's very serious, we take that very serious. We need to make sure that we have a process, like the Human Rights Committee, to make sure that individuals' rights are reviewed on a periodic basis, to make sure that teams and the state have exhausted all other possibilities before we reduce or move to remove someone's rights. Pause there, any questions so far? Just a second. Okay. So next, appendix is financial accountability. So as part of the application to the federal government, the state needs to assure financial accountability. How do we make payment for services, ensure integrity of payments, comply with federal requirements to receive matching funds? So we need to explain, you know, what our billing process is, the requirements for billing that are spelled out in our regulations, how we ensure the integrity of those payments, how we make sure that if a service is paid for, that it has in fact been delivered, you know, we also have a process through our work with Office of Internal Audit. Sometimes they may go out and review for audit providers, just to ensure the integrity of billing practices and reimbursement. Next is the cost neutrality demonstration. So does the state meet statutory cost neutrality requirements? So what this means is the average per person cost for home and community-based services must be less than the average per person cost for institutional care. So in other words, the average cost of someone's individual service plan must be less than the cost of if that service was provided in an institution or an ICF, for example. I'd also like to point out too, that this is kind of an area where I talk about where the word waiver comes from, we always hear the word waiver, whether it's DD waiver, or we talked about, you know, supports waiver recently in the town halls. The word waiver is, we are waiving, now we are, but the federal government is waiving the requirement to allow services to be provided in the community, though it otherwise be provided in an institution. So that's where the word waiver comes from.
Before you move on Scott, so we did, we did see that there is a raised hand, and I wanna just remind attendees, if you could use at this point in time the chat box to alert us to your questions or your comments, we will stop and we're reviewing those as we go. And again, at the end of the session, if you do want an opportunity to speak up verbally, we can open your mic if you alert us to that during, in the chat box, we will do that.
All right, so finishing up with the appendices, the final two of the application, Appendix G is participant safeguards. So what safeguards has the state established to protect the participants from harm? So we explained to CMS our system for abuse neglect exploitation, that's managed through our sister agency, the Division of Health Improvement. So when the allegations of abuse neglect exploitation are investigated, this is one way to safeguard and protect individuals from harm. Appendix H is a systems improvement, so describe a system for continuous quality improvement, including discovery and remediation. So the part of this process, as you know, in our standards, we have requirements of providers for quality assurance plans, quality improvement initiatives, quality improvement committees, so we just, we talked about that in detail in the application to CMS. Okay, the next slide is continuing on with, you know, the DD waiver program and other requirements that we report to the federal government. So as we've talked about a couple times, with renewing waivers, they can be approved up to five years at a time, that's been going on since 1984 for the DD waiver. As part of the renewal, we need to make sure that individuals have the opportunity and the right to a fair hearing. So in other words, for example, if there's a individual service plan or a service on the budget that's been requested and been denied for whatever reason, we need to make sure that individuals and guardians have the opportunity and the right to formally request a fair hearing, to be able to make their case, if it's why they didn't agree with the decision. So we currently have that in place now, and that will be continued in the waiver program. Fair hearings are run through the Human Services Department. As we talked about on bullet number two, participant safeguards, like requirements for abuse neglect and exploitation reporting, and then provider surveys by the Quality Management Bureau as well. We also have different quality improvement strategies, the state reports to the federal government, performance measures, so we have to routinely report to the feds, performance measures, compliance reports. We have a provider enrollment process, so that we actually have providers who can deliver the service, this is for, you know, someone or an agency that may be brand new to applying services, applying for services, providers who want to renew their agreements with the division. We have, as part of our enrollment process, providers have the option to add or delete services as well, so that's certainly gonna continue through the waiver program. And then we also have our service definitions and rate determinations to meet CMS requirements. So any questions, Christina?
Okay, so we do have a comment. I live in a supportive, I live in supported living, I'm told I can't make appointments after 3:00 PM because they make dinners and do hygiene with us, the clients. On weekends, we only go out in groups because there's not enough staff. So thank you for that comment, that's certainly not the intent of the service, and so if you... Okay, I think there's just a follow-up to that. I would certainly like to open up this dialogue a little bit more, we heard a lot in our listening sessions about supported living models and concerns that people in services had about these sorts of challenges while working with providers. So would anybody else like to add into that? Comment?
Yeah, cuz that, that comment certainly does not sound person-centered, you know, I mean, it sounds like it's, the program is simply, is making some requirements based on the provider's needs, not based on the person's choices, and that's actually, you know, not what CMS final rule says, as we know. And so, I mean, what I would suggest to this person is to talk to your case manager and ask about getting a team meeting and saying, you know, this is, this is an important issue for you, that this is your life and there are things that you wanna do, and to have a conversation about that, and, you know, you can certainly get in touch with Christina and I as well, but that's not what Person-Centered Planning is about. You know, Person-Centered is making it work for the person, that you as an individual in the program are in charge of your own life, and so it is up to you to, you know, to make your needs known and to say, this is what's important, and then to work with the provider to see how that could work out. So what do other people think? I mean, what's your experience with this? How do you make it work? I know it's always a, it's a balance, you know, where, you know, people wanna live their lives and they wanna do the things that are important to them, just like every one of us, just like everybody that's participating, and how do we do that? How do we actually make that work in real life? So in the comments, please let us know, if you're a provider, how are you doing that for the people that you're supporting? How do you make that happen in the lives of the people that you work for? And then if there's other people in service or family members, what's your experience with this?
And just to add to what both Christina and Wendy have said is, you know, this is a very important issue, it's an issue that we do here, you know, in our work throughout the state at town halls, and we really do strive to not just speak about and have language that promotes Person-Centered, but more importantly, we want to make sure that Person-Centered this is implemented, and there's, can be challenges with that, you know, that teams have to work through, and I would encourage you as well, as Wendy has stated, reach out to your case manager, if you or the case manager need assistance, you can always reach out to DDSD, we might be able to be some assistance as well, and to hear, you know, more information not only from you, but also from your team and problem solve. You know, sometimes we hear that I'm not in the right waiver, I can't self-direct, and I think the message is, regardless of which waiver you're in, whether it's DD waiver, ME waiver, or the upcoming supports waiver, self-directed, should exist in all three of those waivers, and that's really our message, and so we wanna make sure that we move forward to move forth, not just having the language, but also doing the best we can to make sure that it's truly implemented for people with services.
We have the comments. So there's some more comments related to this, and I would encourage, if you have a very individual-specific issue, to please contact DDSD after the meeting, so we can talk to you more about it. But if there are other comments about this challenge of the supported living model, and getting a schedule that is right for you and not based on the staff, and then on the flip side, a provider challenge of staffing a home in a supported living model, please, you know, continue to make comments as we go forward, so we can think about some systems improvements. I think at this point, we can, we'll move forward for now and keep coming back.
Right, thank you. So the next couple slides, we're gonna talk about the service array within the DD waiver. So the services that you're gonna see on these next couple slides are services that currently exist within the DD waiver. The Division certainly has every intention of including these services again with the waiver renewal. There may be some changes within each of these services, but the point of these two slides is to provide information on the Division's intent in terms of what services will be included in the waiver renewal. So the first bullet there is case management, so case management will continue to be a service in the DD waiver. We also have our Community Inclusion Services, and so Community Inclusion is really the umbrella term for our Community Integrated Employment, so our employment services such as job coaching, job development, we have customized community supports, or sometimes known as day services, and this includes a fiscal management of adult education. So sometimes this piece gets lost in day services, but this is an opportunity for individuals maybe to access some funds to take classes that they, they may be interested in. The next section is the Living Care Arrangements, which include customizing home supports. So this is not a residential service, it's not a 24-hour support, its intent is intermediate staffing supports for individuals who may be more independent or want to be more independent, to live on their own, or maybe live at home with family, or live with friends and need some intermediate supports. Next, we have Family Living, which is a 24-hour residential model, and then we, followed by our Supported Living, is for individuals who live with housemates and anywhere from two to four individuals in a home. This service includes nutritional counseling as well as nursing services. We also have intensive medical living services for those individuals who may have greater needs in terms of medical and nursing support needs. That's a 24-hour service, which also includes nutritional counseling and nursing services. So pause here just a second. So next, on the list is our Professional Clinical Services. So we intend to continue with adult nursing services. In parentheses there, you'll see that adult nursing services is not available to young adults 18 to 20, unless they have been identified as at risk for aspiration. The reason for this, because if you're under the age of 20, you don't have an identified aspiration risk, nursing services are available to your state Medicaid plan, to the individual state Medicaid plan. We also have behavior support consultation services for individuals who may have challenging behaviors, or you have a consultant who works with the team to help team develop strategies to maybe mitigate or reduce some of those challenging behaviors. We have nutritional counseling, which is a standalone service that individuals can access, this is also a service that is incorporated into our residential support, so we just spoke of Supported Living, intensive medical, and family living. Also part of Professional Clinical Services, we have preliminary risk screening and consultation related to sexually inappropriate behavior, and we will continue to offer therapy services through the DD waiver, that would be the speech, language pathology, occupational therapy, physical therapy, we also allow for physical therapy assistance, and CODA's Certified Occupational Therapy Assistance. As with nursing services, if you're under the age of 20, individuals can access therapy services through their state Medicaid plan, unless you've been identified to need supports due to risk for an aspiration. But I think Christina noted earlier, the reason for this, for nursing and therapy services is because states can't duplicate services through a waiver that would be, individuals would be eligible for under their state Medicaid plan. Any comments on this, these services? Okay, finally, we have other services, which include assistive technology, behavioral crisis supports, plan to continue with the environmental modification service, so this may be a service, you know, individual may have access or need modifications to the home to access the bathroom, so might be able to widen doors, do roll-in showers, that's a part of this service, environmental modifications. We have our Independent Living Transition Services. This service, the intent of this service is to allow those individuals who may want to move for, move from maybe a 24-hour support to intermittent supports, such as customizing home supports, so in other words, going from a 24-hour model to less staffing supports. So this service, Independent Living Transition, offers some assistance with funding to help with people to move, to become more independent, move into their own homes. We have our non-medical transportation service, so this service is reimbursed through mileage for transportation, also within the service, you can use the service to purchase bus passes to get around, this is an important service, obviously for parts of the state, and even in parts of the state where there is public transportation, it's not always as available or as accessible. it's not always as available or as accessible as one would like. So the non-medical transportation is a service that many people might be able to access. We have our supplemental dental, again, for individuals under the age of 20. Personal support technology. This is the service that the division really wants to show a commitment to. Currently, we have a few providers of this service statewide. So I believe here in a little while, we will be showing a video on personal support technology. Really, again, this is an effort to, you know, provide individuals with as much support as possible so they can be as independent as they may want. An independence or support doesn't always have to come in the form of face-to-face staff support. It can come in other forms, such as personal support technology. We also have our respite. And then finally, the socialization and sexuality education classes. So it looks like we may have had a couple of questions come in.
Do individuals under independent living qualify for nutrition services?
Yes, the answer to that would be yes. If you're in customizing home supports, you can qualify for nutrition services. It would be a separate line item on the budget. So the answer is yes.
So some CIHS customized in-home supports, individuals do not like the monthly home visit. They prefer face-to-face and once in a while in the home. So that's a nice comment to hear. These comments will be memorialized. We are able to save the chat box. If you'd like to clarify a little bit more on that, if, in my mind, there's also a case management visit. And I'm wondering if you want to clarify for the person who wrote this, more specifically what you're referencing. Yes, so, well, the chat box will be open and we can even continue to put some information in there. But what we are going to try to do now is just to kind of see where people's opinions are at for those of you on our webinar. We have this polling function here that I'm going to open up. So what we have is a poll. There are, I believe it's seven questions here, 10 questions. Okay, so what region are you participating from? What service area needs the most improvement? And you have some options here. Are annual ISP meetings person-centered? Most of the time, the level of employment supports received is too much, too little, just right. And we have a number of questions along those lines, also including non-medical transportation. Trying more technology supports is important. Most of the time, the level of nursing supports received is too much, too little, just right. And another question for therapies along those lines. And then most of the time, the level of behavior supports is too much, too little, just right. Finally, the level of supplemental dental. So these questions should be available to you on your device. You just click the answer. We're going to stop for about 10 minutes right now if you want to take a break. While you're completing this poll, the results will be kind of live. In a few minutes, I'll end the poll and share the results. It's just a way to kind of see where people who are here today are generally feeling in these areas. And if you're in a group, you might have to like, try to vote on your favorite answer for that particular group because you'll have one opportunity for an answer here. So it's 2:25 and I will end the poll at 2:35. And take a break. If you've finished up, just take a break and we'll start the presentation again at 2:35. Maybe I'll mute us if I can. Oh. It's like, there. Can you get? It's funny, it was the, the arrow. There you go. Okay. Can you mute us? You should be able to see it in just a moment. So you should be able to see the results of what came up. So in terms of who's participating in this town hall today, we have 12 from metro, one from the northeast, three from southeast, and one from northwest. So keeping in mind that not everybody participated in the poll, and that's fine, but this just gives you a sense of, you know, kind of, we were there in the room with you. We might be asking you these questions and asking you to raise your hands if you had an opinion on this. And so that's kind of what this is doing for us right now. So in terms of what service area needs the most improvement, we saw two responses for case management, two for CCS, five for the living care arrangements, cluster of services, four for professional clinical services, and then four for other. Did you get that? Did you get it? Yes. Okay. So I'll move it up. So the third question was, are annual ISP meetings person-centered? Most, we know that not every meeting goes perfectly one-way, perfectly good or perfectly bad. So are annual ISP meetings person-centered? Mostly yes, we had nine respondents. And mostly no, eight people responded mostly no. Most of the time, the level of employment supports that is received is too little. 14 respondents, too little, and three with just right. Most of the time, the level of non-medical transportation supports received is 13 respondents with too little and four with just right. Trying more technology supports is important. So we actually asked this question before showing a video that's pretty, it gives a pretty good explanation of how technology may be used in a person's life. So this is interesting to see that. Even prior to that video, we saw a lot of respondents saying that it is important and one saying no. Most of the time, the level of nursing supports received is too little at 41%, too much, five respondents, 29%. Just right, five respondents, 29%. Most of the time, the level of therapies received is 41%. Seven saying too little. 47%, that's eight, saying too much. And 12%, two saying just right. Most of the time, the level of behavior support is 59% as too little, 12% as too much, and 29% as just right. And most of the time, the level of supplemental dental received is 41% at too little and 10% at just right. So this just gives you a sense of, based on the people who responded and those attending the webinar today, kind of what the trending thoughts are. Thank you for participating. It was interesting to see what people have said. Now, we are going to answer some more comments that came into the chat box and then turn it over to Wendy, who might, will be helping us have a deeper kind of dialogue through that chat box of more input and opinions you may have. I was just asked the question here, did I take ourselves off mute? And I'm very hopeful that I did. And it looks like I did. And I'm very hopeful that I did, and it looks like I did. So hopefully, that was all well heard. So I'm going to turn it over to you, because there's some markings that have come in.
Yeah, so we've got a couple of questions and requests to come in. So the first is, how can I have a copy of the information in this conference? So certainly, we plan on posting the PowerPoint in English to the website. We're also going to do the best we can to work internally to have this translated in Spanish and also posted on the website. But that will take us a little bit more time, but that is our intent. And we have a question, what does supplemental dental care cover? So essentially, what supplemental dental care covers is an additional examination and dental cleaning. So through your state Medicaid card, dental services are covered. With this on your budget through the waiver, you could have one additional exam and cleaning during the year. With that being said, we do recognize that there are challenges with accessing this service in terms of number of providers statewide. So we're certainly working to try to improve the access to the service. The next question is, will the changes to the definitions in the New Mexico Administrative Code regarding eligibility become effective in July of 2020? That is the intended target date, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, so we'll move on. Oh, there you go.
Apologize, we're getting there.
There we go. Which button? Just hit the button that says from current slide. I think it's the second one. There you go.
Okay, good. So this is Wendy, whoops. So I'm also curious if anybody was surprised by the results of the poll. As we said, this is kind of just a real, you know, a simplistic, quick survey. But if you had any, you know, any thoughts about, if you had any surprises, that would be interesting if you want to just check in and chat about that. So the next several slides are about specific service areas and topic areas. And so the intent is really to open it up for your feedback and ideas, recommendations. I know it may be a little frustrating that we're not presenting well-developed content today. Some of those areas are still being fleshed out. The steering committee is hard at work. DDSD is hard at work, really, you know, providing a lot more detail. And you will have an opportunity at the in-person town halls to really respond and react to a much more detailed array of content and services. But for right now, I'm kind of in broad strokes. We're really curious and want to know what kind of feedback you have. Does he have logged in from another device? So we're going to go through these next couple of slides. Again, we're looking for some recommendations and suggestions on the DD waiver renewal. And then, you know, what's really important is any unintended consequences. That's why we have made the steering committee such a broad array of participants and representation that it is 50% provider agencies and 50% self-advocates, advocates, advocate agencies, family members, guardians, because everybody has a particular point of view and a different perspective and a different experience. And all of that is so important to really creating the best waiver that we can for everybody. So the first set of topics that we wanted to check in about are implementing the person-centered planning and ensuring human rights. What are your experiences with this? How do you ensure that this happens for people? We already heard from one participant that they are having difficulty with this, and it sounds like perhaps they are not really getting a person-centered plan. But what are other people's experiences? What about the individual service plan, the ISP and case management? Is that a service that we could improve on? Do you have any suggestions or recommendations about the ISP and case management services? What about the use of a standardized assessment? Do you have any thoughts about that? And the outside review activities, any comments or feedback on that? So we'll give you a few minutes to get into your chat box, and we'll read those off and see what you have to say. We did hear some comment, a comment from the morning session. This is our second session today, from the morning, that perhaps people would also want to make individual comments to DDSD, and that's certainly possible as well. And so at the end of this presentation today, we will put up our email addresses as well as the email address for DDSD. So there's lots of opportunities to provide feedback.
We have a comment that came in, it looks like they're asking for clarification of CCS and supported living. So CCS stands for customized community supports. And so these are supports offered through the DD waiver, through a provider, to individuals as part of their plan to help them become involved in their community and participate in different types of activities. Supported living is a 24-hour residential service, and it's typically provided to individuals in their own homes or leased homes, rented homes, in a setting of two to four people.
And just a reminder that whatever is shared with us in the chat box, that will be going into a tracking system because we really want to take all that information. And that will be, you know, that will be part of the work of the steering committee in terms of the development of the DD waiver renewal. So everything that you have to say is really, really important. Move on, okay. So if you do want to add anything, please do. So kind of the next few topics that we wanted to ask you about were employment supports. What's your experience with this? Are there ways that we could improve that? Are there any barriers that you're aware of that could be addressed in the waiver renewal that could provide more effective services? And then what about community inclusion, addressing in-home needs during the day? This was a, this is a topic that we've heard a fair amount about, that people, some people really would like to have more time at home alone during the day, that not everybody wants to be out and about in the community all the time, that some people, for a variety of reasons, really want to be home. And they may not want to be out, you know, every day doing things. And so how do we allow for that flexibility and that real person, you know, person-centeredness in our system? So again, your thoughts about that, your ideas, your suggestions? How do you make that work right now?
So if you have a comment, why people are considering their responses for employment and community inclusion, the comment is on the annual ISP process. It states, "The annual ISP process is a lengthy process and often is very cut and paste for previous years. Encouraging any prep work to be completed prior to meeting would be very helpful so that it should be discussing that information versus trying to think of topics on the spot." "We should be recognizing accomplishments and celebrations as part of the annual process more versus the ISP document holding a lot of outdated information." So I would say that we, as a department, certainly agree with this comment, this feedback. We certainly agree and promote that there's, in terms of time, there's ISP pre-meetings. So whether that's in the home or, you know, anywhere outside of the actual meeting, to have those really meaningful conversations. So you do come in to the meeting, just as you suggested in the feedback, with ideas already, so you're not trying to figure them out on the spot, as you stated very clearly. We do agree that the ISP should not just be about moving forward, but you should also, that annual ISP should be a celebration of the person's life, that previous years, and really taking the time to honor that person and honor the progress that they've made over the past year and build on the progress as you move forward with the annual ISP. So thank you for your feedback and those comments. Another comment that Supported Living wants to add customized community supports to program, to perform the task they should be doing with the individual, such as taking the clients to church or shopping. So what I'm taking away from this comment is there maybe should be some more clarity about the scope of services between Supported Living and customized community supports, not necessarily to separate the two, but also how can they work together jointly to support the person the best we possible? So thank you for that comment.
I think somebody did write a question in the Q and A box. If you wouldn't mind, if you have not already put in that question in the chat box, that's a better way to do it, because otherwise it'll block the screen. So if you would, if you'd be so kind as to also put your question, if you've not already, in the chat box, that would be great. And just a quick comment on the person-centered planning. When we've done listening sessions, there was, you know, many people said that, people that are on the waivers, they said that they actually, they have a very good life, that they do receive person-centered planning, that their teams listen to them, and that they really are living the life that they want. We also heard from people that said they are not getting that and that the teams are not listening and that, you know, really, there could be improvement in their team about really making sure that the person's wishes are heard and addressed. And so really want to encourage people that are getting what they need and providers that are really supporting and listening. That's fabulous. We have heard, you know, from people that that's really happening across the state. And there's also room for improvement, that there are, you know, many people on the waiver also talked about not really being, yet having their lives the way that they would like them to be. Another common theme that we heard was that probably 80% of the people wanted to learn how to run their own meetings. And so that was a really important thing, that people were saying they want to be in charge or running their own IDT meetings. And so how could they learn how to do that? So that was kind of a real theme that we heard throughout our system. I think there's more comments?
There are more comments. Wendy, we have a comment with respect to community inclusion. It says, "A legitimate online community can be very meaningful. It needs to be considered as community inclusion." So I think this certainly goes along with, you know, technology and the explosion of technology. Everyone uses technology, and not everyone's community is the face of this community, but an online community. So thank you for that comment, and it's something certainly we take back and recognize. Expediting the DVR referral process is needed. So we also heard that in this morning's session. And the person-centered assessment for customized community supports individual is repetitious of the ISP. So thank you for that feedback, and we'll certainly take that back to our leaders within DDSD who work on both the person-centered assessment and ISP. And we don't try to make things repetitive. Sometimes we miss the mark and we're redundant, and so that's valuable. And we'll do the best we can to work towards simplifying and streamlining our processes.
Okay, the next topic, living care arrangements. Supporting people needing intensive support for mobility and personal care. This is also something that we've been hearing a lot about, especially regarding people that do need more support physically. And so how do we allow for that flexibility? Again, it all comes down to person-centered. You know, what is it that the person needs? What is it that they want? If somebody, for physical reasons, needs to be home more, you know, how can they be allowed to have that flexibility? You know, I know with the cold weather, sometimes that's a concern for people going out that are more sensitive to the cold and getting sick. And so really, you know, again, what is it that the person, that the person wants in their life? What kind of life do they want? So again, what are your thoughts about this? Ways we can improve this, any suggestions or recommendations, your experiences on how this works for you?
So I have another comment. So the comment or question is, what happened with the module that was developed by individuals years ago about individuals running their own ISP IDT meeting? So that module, that process, or that line of thinking certainly has not gone away. That's preferred. That's what we promote. And so really, I think the focus lies, or the responsibility, lies on everyone, from state staff to provider staff, individuals and services, supports. The ones sitting in those meetings remind each other of why we're there and to focus really on the individual and encourage people to run their own meetings, to provide them with as much support as possible to run their own meetings. So we hear you loud and clear, that has not gone away. But we certainly need to be better and work towards improving that.
And so just an ad for people that are in the metro area. At the People First Meeting next Wednesday, which I think is November 6th. Is that right? Is that number right?
Yeah.
I think it's November 6th. Next Wednesday, the People First Chapter will be doing a training on, no, not till December. This Wednesday, if you're in Metro, actually, this Wednesday in Metro, we're going to have Jenny Bartos from DDSD, and she will be talking about abuse, neglect, and exploitation and really wanting to work with people that are receiving services on the waiver to help develop a curriculum that really works for people on the waiver. And at the December People First Meeting, there will be a training on how to run your own IDT. And so we have self-advocates that are experts in running their own meetings, and they'll be sharing how to do that. So if you know anybody, any of the people you support, anybody that's in services on the phone, family members, we encourage you to attend that. It's December. I'll look it up and put it in the chat box, @ddpc. And so we'll put that information in the chat box. But if you or anybody you support want to learn how to run your own IDT meeting, this would be a great time to do that.
Sorry, Wendy, I apologize. You may have to repeat that. I was reading the question while you were.
Yes.
So what would you like in the chat box?
Oh, that on December, yeah, December 4th, from 10 to 11, at the Development Disability Planning Council. at the Development Disability Planning Council, there will be a free training on how to run your own IDT. And if anybody wants more information about that, my contact information, Wendy Corey, will be at the end of the slideshow. And please contact me and we'll send out some files for that.
December 4th, 10 to 11, correct?
Yes. Was there another question or comment to thank?
There was a question, where is the module on person-centered planning, how to run your own meeting? So actually your comment ties into that. So the free training that's coming up. Also, I don't know off the top of my head, I can't remember if it's on our website or not, but I can certainly get with our training department who I believe has the module and talks a lot about the person-centered planning. So I see your comment and I can circle back with you and reach out and see if I can get your copy of that.
Maybe we could post that on the website, on the DDSD.
Maybe either. I just don't, I don't want to say that now without remembering. So we'll, I'll check there first as well.
So we know that we have DDSD representatives on the line. So it's possible that there's someone from our training unit on the line. So if you want to put the information in the chat box, that would be great. And otherwise, we'll get the information out as a follow-up to this.
Any other comments? Okay, so some more topics that we want to get your input and your ideas on. On non-medical transportation and what's your experience with this? Do you know about this? Are you aware that there is a service available to people on the waiver to provide non-medical transportation? Do you have questions about how that works? And then also the technology. We're going to show you a video, a YouTube, about personal support technology that is pretty amazing. And just to kind of help all of us think bigger and broader. That as Scott mentioned, you know, people, you know, a lot of people that we talk to, they want to be more independent. And so what does that mean for people? It doesn't necessarily mean that everybody's going to go out and get their own apartment. But how can we help people to be the most independent as they possibly can be and as much as they want to be? And so we want to show this video to give some ideas about what's available right now.
Okay, it sounds like we got a lot of no's. We did show the video. It is three minutes long. And we're seeing on the chat box that it wasn't viewable. Well, what I might ask is that are people able to see the YouTube screen now? Or if it was when we took it to the full screen?
Doesn't look like we can see it.
Okay, well, yeah, let's, hold on a second. We'll see if we can't get it going. It's a very, it does seem like a very, people in the first session really did enjoy this video quite a bit. Okay, I'm wondering if we'll wait for our IT support. We do have still quite a bit of time left to our webinar. So maybe we move forward and then when IT comes, they'll help us get it queued up.
So any comments?
No, just a lot of, we can't see the video.
Too bad. Yep.
We apologize.
All right, so we'll keep moving forward then. So again, if you had any ideas or comments about non-medical transportation or the technology, specifically the personal support technology. I think somebody here mentioned that isn't underfunded, not underfunded, it's underutilized, the service. I mean, it's got great potential and a lot of people really are not using it. So we'd really love to see more people have access to that service.
So we did have one comment, Wendy, I apologize, it was in family living, that individuals who have, may have higher medical needs, they only get 750 hours of sub-care. So I believe what's implied there is DDSD should consider more than 750 hours of sub-care. So thank you for that feedback.
Can you maybe do anything else? They haven't answered. I mean, I'll go to the door, tap on the door and they'll answer you. Okay, all right. So the next topic areas are nursing, therapies, behavior support, and supplemental dental. I think those are pretty self-explanatory. So again, what is your experience? Do you see any room for improvement? Access issues, quality, anything that DDSD should be considering in terms of the waiver renewal and any ways to improve those services or make them more accessible? What are your thoughts about these topics? And again, we'll give you a few minutes to type in chat.
So the question that just came in, are there any plans for changing nursing oversight systems in the new waiver application? So certainly internally, we are starting to have some conversation about nursing services and the oversight. We do understand that, you know, there's complexities to it. So with the application, you know, would be the revision of the standards. So there may be some changes in terms of nursing oversight. Really not trying to dodge the question or not answer the question, but just relay that initial conversations have begun. When we're ready to, when we flesh out that out further and have specific revisions or potential changes, we will offer those in the face-to-face town halls. So people will have more specific information to comment on and provide feedback on. Another comment, need more support in family living for individuals who have more medical needs and wants to stay in their own home.
So I would like to add, just dig a little deeper with that comment. If you are able to put in the chat box when you say need more support, is there anything specific that you can share with us?
So we're going to pause one more time and try to give this video a shot. So if it doesn't work this time, then we'll move on. So.
So the YouTube is on here.
Okay.
They didn't have access to see it.
Yeah, that's fine. I think the best bet is probably to. Which tab was that on?
It's 28. Go down further.
So unfortunately, Microsoft, just, they're completely aware of this issue, but this is the only way to do it sometimes. And so you guys can just make it big here.
So I don't believe that screen is being shared though. It was only click the window or the PowerPoint one?
Oh, did you only share like a specific window?
Yeah, I think so.
And not everything?
Yeah.
So then, yeah, it did look like that. So I'm, should I, can I just share the whole desktop?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Because if I do that, then no matter what you do on that screen, I'll be able to see it. So even if you switch back and forth, we'll start back and switch that way down. Sound good?
Yes.
All right, should I stick around and?
Yeah, it's only three minutes long. Three minutes, so that would make sure we.
Yeah, yeah. I'll hang up. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so we're going to start this again and we'll just try to get confirmation in the chat box that people are seeing it.
Hey, Shaz, thank you for the warranty.
Did it go through?
No.
Were they even seen?
Yes, they, they said yes. I think we got a lot of those.
So we, so just to get back to the other screen.
Just back to PowerPoint.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Okay, thank you.
And then you gotta open up.
Yeah.
Start with that. Okay, guys. Or write it on the PowerPoint if you have.
Thank you.
I think there was some comments that came in.
There was lots of yeses. They can see the video now.
Oh, okay.
There was one other comment about supported living and family living. Feedback in terms of needing extra assistance in both supported living and family living for those people who may need two-person support to meet hygiene needs.
Thank you. And I think there was a question in chat about if we would be posting kind of the results of this conversation. And so on the DD waiver, on the DD website there, we will be compiling all of the chat information and we'll be posting that. So if you're, if you want to see kind of the results from this morning as well as this afternoon, we'll be posting a tracking sheet with all the comments that people made. Okay, this is our last slide on this particular topic areas. And this is about rates, cost containment, electronic visit verification, and training and monitoring. So again, any experiences, anything that we should be considering in terms of improving the waiver renewal? Anything that would be helpful for us to know in terms of improving the system? What are your thoughts about this? What are your thoughts about this?
Informative video.
Wasn't it great?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a great video. Christina found that.
Sorry. Another comment, need more oversight for therapy services, which includes collaborating with provider agencies to work towards reducing the need for ongoing therapies. They definitely need to be more outcome-based. Thank you for that feedback. Rates need to increase to match the increase in minimum wage.
I wonder if they could, because obviously if it's staff, everybody's getting paid minimum wage. So I'm wondering if maybe there's a little more content. I'm not sure exactly what that means to you. Because minimum wage should be a bottom line. So not sure, unless you'd support employment, like. Anyway, if you wouldn't mind providing a little more info so we can really consider, that would be helpful.
I'm going to take a guess here. I could be wrong, so clarify if I'm wrong. But I think what is being said here, as the increase in minimum wage goes up for direct support staff, the reimbursement to the provider should go up as well.
Got it.
If I'm wrong and what your feedback was, please let me know.
Sure.
Starting January 2020, minimum wage increases to $9 an hour. All the way up to 2023, increase to $12.
Right, okay. Thank you.
When rates are funded, how do you guarantee the employees are given the rate increase? So that is a very good question. The department has an established rate to pay for the service and we pay that rate to the service provider. The department does not dictate one way or the other to the provider in terms of the hourly rate for direct support professionals. That differs from agency to agency, provider to provider. Certification of agency trainers to train service coordinators or allowing remote training opportunities to reduce expenses for those of us in rural areas would be great. So again, feedback on more train-to-trainer opportunities and remote training opportunities. I think today's a start. We're trying to go there. Hopefully, this has been a good start. But we certainly recognize the need to access technology, have remote trainings, especially in more rural parts of the state. So thank you.
That's it?
That's it so far, yes?
Okay, great. And that last point really does point to the need, if you would be so kind, is to really fill out, there's a Survey Monkey? And we'll talk about that. Because we really do want to know, is this an effective way of doing presentations? It certainly doesn't replace face-to-face presentations or input. But, you know, did you find this effective as a way to try to reach out to the entire state? So really would welcome your feedback on that.
To that end, Scott is now putting in the chat box the link to a Survey Monkey meeting evaluation. It was also the same link that was posted, if you signed on early, was posted on the page you were viewing before we got started. And so there's about, I believe there's about 10 questions in the meeting evaluation form. And we would really be pleased if you filled that out.
So again, this is not the only time to give, to provide input or feedback. We also very much welcome any written comments to the BDSM mailbox. And that, I think was also on the initial.
The next slide that we can leave up for a while has all the specific contact.
Okay. Please also do contact myself and Christina Hill. We would hope that you would also participate in the face-to-face town halls that will be scheduled in the spring of 2020. And then also HSD will be doing a public comment period, which is also another forum for providing input. And again, emails, written comments, anytime at all, you're certainly welcome. And all of those are put on the tracking system so that everything is included and is really considered in the waiver renewal. As Christina said, here is the contact information. So any other additional comments, questions, anything that you would like to add before we sign off here?
You have another question. It says, on the new waiver in remote areas, will nursing assessment via Skype be approved? But I could say at this point in time, this is something that the division has discussed internally. The idea of telehealth or telemedicine. We need to make sure that in order to do that, you know, we have, we meet all the regulatory requirements as well. So I'm not saying yes or no, but I'm saying that it's certainly something that is being discussed internally as a possibility for nursing assessments or different types of assessments.
So if that is something that you would like to see, by all means, send email or put in the chat, this is a service that you would like to have considered.
So we can just stay on one or two more minutes and see if anything else comes in?
Yep.
Oh, okay. So this really just gives you the exact link to the DD waiver steering committee page, which really is going to have the most up-to-date information about details. As Scott said, telehealth has been something that has been brought to our attention and we're working on that more concretely. We will be bringing that to our steering committee in more detail and then getting it ready to be discussed more publicly in the town halls that are planned in the spring. So this steering committee webpage will be a good go-to place to get the most up-to-date information.
So we have a response, Wendy, nursing services via Skype for remote areas is a service I would like to see.
Perfect, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else you want to see, by all means, put that in the chat. Because again, that gets, you know, once it's there, it's for the steering committee to be considering. And so the more people that say they want something, then the more weight that has. Sure. So again, this is the direct contact information. Anything that you would like to share? Please do do the Survey Monkey. That's really important in terms of how effective this type of communication is. And as Scott said, we'll stay on just a few minutes. So that if you want to continue typing in the chat box, you're welcome to. And if not, we'll say thank you very much for joining us and for your participation. We greatly appreciate it.
So we have another comment before we close. Nursing services via Skype for remote areas is a service I would like to see. I would like BDSM to strongly encourage guardians to take certain BDSM-themed training such as the sexuality class.